It is more or less five o'clock. The May 12th meeting of the Sherwood Planning Commission will come to order. The Secretary will call the roll.
Knight?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Middleton?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Yalom?
Here.
You've received a copy of the minutes of the February meeting. Are there any corrections or additions?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I have a motion and a second.
Knight?
Here.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Yalom?
Uh, aye.
Are there any revisions to the agenda? And it will stand as printed. First item is number five.
An appeal to staff decision regarding offense application at 7048 Ridge Mist Lane, Milton Harper owner.
We have a decision that was made during staff review. We have an appeal of this decision. The decision is based upon criteria that we have for corner lots. This location at 7048 Ridge Mist Lane is a corner lot. I should introduce myself for the sake of those who are watching the live streaming. I'm Richard, City Engineer. We have had for several months a consultant planner in, at this particular location in the room presenting things and because of personnel changes and for the sake of bringing something to you that's something you can expect each month, we have an open position for a planner. I'll go ahead and advertise that until such time as we have someone else that should be standing here. I'll stand here and hopefully it's continuity to these meetings and hopefully get better at this as we go through the year. At 7048 Ridge Mist, we have a fence that is already constructed. Corner lots have setbacks on the front and on the side. The issue is with the side of the property. In this diagram, you can see, I'll increase the, here a little bit. On this side, this is area where the encroachment is. We have an application here requesting a special exception distance of 13.7 feet onto the front yard setback for my fence. Well, given that this is corner lot, onto, on that particular side, 13.7 is part of that 25 feet. So roughly half of the distance and it's, that's what's being requested. We have a fence, a committee of the planning commission that is looking into these fence regulations. And we also have another item on the agenda in a moment that is a product of that first couple of meetings we've had. So in this particular case, I want you to bear this information. And reason that we denied it is simply based on the information that we have today and the regulations that we have today. And the review process, there's a staff review allowed for the city engineer to review. And in cases where there is no obstruction that creates any sort of traffic problem with the visibility, we can allow some of these encroachments. And the second criteria is that the encroachment does not prevent a neighbor from enjoying their ability to view the neighborhood as they should be able to view it if the full 25 foot was available for them. So in this case...
Richard, was this built without permit?
Yes, it was built without a permit. So we're simply backing up and going through the regular approval process. And in the review of the process, permit on place. Is that just one side of it?
Well, it's within the 25 feet and it's...
The part that is encroached there is on that 25, it would be that portion.
On the redwood, red bud, whatever name that's right.
Red Oak.
Red Oak.
I think that's right.
Now, does this, does this thing sign to apply to the code, like the Ridge, Ridge Mist code?
If it's a corner lot, it's a corner lot.
It is a corner lot.
Yeah. Corner is corner, regardless whether it's a street or a code.
So we got, we got two of these fences in.
Got more than that, I counted three when... They're outside of the code.
I took pictures of the, on Ridge Mist Cove, that fence, it's just like this one right, just like the one that's being contested tonight. So that's the reason I was, I was confused about what we're really looking at. Cause I drove down there just to see for myself, cause I didn't know. And when I took a picture of Ridge Wood, Ridge Mist Cove there, that one goes all the way out there too.
We need to fix it too.
Well, that's, that would be a separate consideration and...
Oh, I'm, I'm just asking. I, I...
I cannot recall the status of that one, whether or not we've got actually a permit on that one or whether that permit was approved based on our, on our rules. Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah. So he's observed other properties in the area.
Well, I was trying, to be honest with you, I was trying to get this one and the one I observed, the DPS that kept saying it's on your left, on your left. I said, no, here it is, right here on the right. I'm arguing with my phone and I keep going on down and looking and sure enough, it is the address before I got to the 60 or whichever one this is.
Yeah. We're at several...
Yeah, if you start down Ridge Mist, there's...
Like I say, I don't know, I didn't mean to throw a wrench in anything. I just was curious for myself.
It is not unusual for us to consider if someone wants a walk gate on the side of the house that, you know, coming six feet or so into this 25 foot easement is, you know, any sort of issue for any, for anybody.
Right.
And it's frequently approved at that level. And in this particular case, if they need something larger than a six foot gate, they do have access from the side to be able to come off of Red Oak, you know, for a larger gate.
Right.
But the fact that it's constructed where it is, it does need to be relocated. And the question is, is to you.
Well, could I ask?
To interpret our interpretation.
Uh, did the contractor know this, the person that built the fence? Did they know that the, that you got a 25 feet on the corner lot? I mean, the gentleman's evidently spent a lot of money on this. It's a nice looking fence. But I'm just curious as to whether a contractor come and say, yeah, he said, put both here, here and here, when he didn't know what the code was. And the gentleman, if, if we follow codes, it's gonna cost them much money.
Paul, do you want to address that?
I think, I think the main issue here is there was never a permit ever before.
Okay.
That's, that's where, that, that point down, that's what we, we addressed, setback requirements, stuff of that nature.
I'm with you.
Now, the other, the other piece of property that you're talking about, there are some in that neighborhood and there are houses that, that are back to back houses. And so you don't have that issue of being able to look down the, down the road and, and lose that view. When we got those that are actually, they just step us that way back, that we can have those that back up, backyard to backyard, then you don't have that front, that side distance.
Well, like I say, I don't know that, I understand that there are some and they look terrible down there, the way they've got them done. That's neither here nor there, it's none of my business. But the one I was asked a solution about here was, is right there on the street and there's no house backed up right to it.
Is, is this gonna be a back to back situation?
No, it is not a back to back. Right.
Okay.
There's another house on Red Oak Lane next to this one that does have a front door that comes out to Red Oak, it faces Red Oak. So that is the situation where we're standing there and looking down the street. The criteria has to be answered from the driveway. Is it creating a side distance problem for traffic and is it, is it preventing them from enjoying the view?
You know, and...
And we can make adjustments. I mean, it's not like it has to be zero. For the, I mean, it's not like it has to be the whole 25. That is the rule. But in these cases where something's needed and they, and they ask and we, and apply those two criteria. And we can say, yes, go ahead. And we, we do that. But in this case, applying those criteria where it's currently sitting does not satisfy that.
Almost looks like it's easier to ask forgiveness than to ask permission. And for me, I don't like... Being put on this bike to go back and...
To turn, tell them to tear it out and off.
Or do I?
Is the applicant or the property owner here? You care to make your case?
Well, the way it is right now...
Up here.
If you could please sign in here. Milton Harper. Where it is right now, it's sitting further out than what it shows here on the plane. I'm willing to move that in. It'll be out towards rail.
How close to the sidewalk?
I'm off the sidewalk. Well, they put the sidewalk there just last week.
Yeah.
And I'm off the sidewalk right now. I didn't put a tape measure on it to measure it. I'm gonna say it's within six feet or five feet.
It's about six feet.
But where I want to, if I can get to that, it's 12 feet from the house and that'd be probably 11, 12 feet off the sidewalk.
12 feet from your house?
Yes, sir.
It seems to me the issue is that they did not pull a permit.
Right.
And constructed the fence without approval. And technically what needs to happen is for a request for a permit or a filing of a permit. And let the staff determine what that distance should be. Cause it clearly can't be 20.
And the staff already decided that the fence is encroaching, it's incorrect?
Oh, and, and the issue before us is this is an appeal. Do we go with the decision made by staff? Yes or no?
I would say yes. The one thing, uh...
Is that a motion?
To me, uh, I'd like to make one comment about the house next door at 6740. If, if I were buying a house in this subdivision, I wouldn't, I wouldn't buy 6740. Why would I want to buy a house that has a fence sticking way out in front of my house? To me, 60, the house at 6740 is now $20,000 less than what it should be. So the fence needs to be put in the correct legal place.
And where was, where was that? The Red Oak side. That, that...
Even with the structure?
I'm not too old. Now, I know the review out there to whether 60 is, that's where we would have to go and look at. That's where we got...
It's 25 feet from where that flag is.
We would have to come back.
With the edge of his house. Is it, is it 25? Yes. Is it 25 feet from where that little flag is or where the little phone thing is there or the water meter? Is it 25 feet from there? If it's 25 feet from there, it's gonna be the corner of his house. That's your property line.
See that red line up there?
Yeah, I see that. I'm just looking at my picture.
That's your 25 feet.
That's basically the fence should be straight off the corner of the house.
Right off the corner of the house.
Which is one of the details in another part of the code. I'm pretty impressed.
I, I, I just think all of them could have been done.
So your decision in the office was, I mean, what is, what is the decision that happened in the office that we're appealing tonight? The decision in the office is we cannot approve this application for permit based on what we've seen. So the permit, pulls the permit, we will have to go out there, make another visit to negotiate where they could come in 25 feet, if any at all. I mean, it, it may not be at all possible, but if there's some distance that would require another trip, we'll look at that and make sure that we're applying the two rules that we have, traffic view, uh, traffic consideration and the neighbor's enjoyment of their view.
For, for the record, the issue before the commission is whether we approve the appeal or deny the appeal.
Motion to the second.
I have a motion and a second.
Knight?
I moved, I'm opposed to deny it. I hate it anytime someone spends this kind of money, but it should have been pulled earlier.
Martin?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Your old business. I appointed a committee to look at fence regulations in our code. And my understanding that you've met once and there has been some discussion about what priorities are for dealing with that. Richard, you want to address where we're at on that?
We've discussed changes to the appeals process to make it easier to follow in the zoning code as well as easier, easier to guide people through it when they call in asking, you know, how to do this. And we had a, one of our meetings today, a plan review, any meeting, we discussed it in pretty good detail. The appeals should be, you know, made in writing. We're sticking with pretty much what we know already. As far as having the hearings concerned, we would have a hearing. These are things that we've discussed, okay? So this is just where we are in discussing it.
These are...
We have this in a final form in April.
These are suggested provisions to the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
I didn't line out exactly the difference between, exactly what we have today and what we're, I mean, I, I have the final form here, but for me to compare the two, rather than the board fixing the reasonable time for a public hearing is what it says today, we would have our planning secretary to set that date and have the, um, the secretary of the, of the board establish the hearing on the appeal and help with the notices, that the notice is advertised in paper. We're still discussing the value of having the signs posted on the property, whether or not it's necessary to post signs for an appeal. As opposed to posting the signs in case of a variance. It's a little different level of consideration, okay? Like if we're rezoning or something, you know, we want those signs out so we can really know. And same thing on the variance, but for the appeal, we're still looking at that, whether or not that's really necessary. And part of that is because of the burden on the person asking, they, they need to put those signs up. Those are pretty well the, the meat of this. Now, there's another component of this which has to do with the enforcement office. And we're looking at coming up possibly another section that will address the enforcement of both the appeals and the denial of a variance. So that in the case that is something is granted, either the appeals or the variance, that a person keeps what they've already done and in cases of things that were already done and how they need to correct it. In those cases, they could, you know, keep what they have if that's found that way. Otherwise, if the appeal is not granted, or not upheld rather, and the variance is not granted, then that means somebody's gotta move something or, or remove something. And there's a time factor for that to happen. And that's part of the enforcement office. We want to clarify that we are notifying person of their time, that they have available correct the situation and making that notification here when the decision's made so that we can follow through with these things a little better and actually get some things done.
Well, I agree with that part on the enforcement stuff. No point having any codes of course. I think I've stated that before, same with laws. Well, we actually started with, into that meeting, we started to go talking about fences on corner lot. Then we moved over to the appeals process. We never got back to the fences on corner lot. Here we are. You know, we need to stress that out. Appeals process can be done very simple. You're pretty much right on the line. Don't like a decision that any of whoever makes? No problem. Appeal and come, thank you. I guess we'd be... Commission, which would be a lot better. Get for general discussion and feel like we did tonight, make a decision. Simple as that. Go tune up.
So we have language that we need to complete regarding the enforcement part of.
Right now, we have a conflict in the code. At one place in the code, it says you take an appeal to the planning commission.
Right.
And another place, it says you take it to the Board of Adjustment. And if it is an appeal of a zoning decision, it logically should go to the Board of Adjustment. And the slight difference is that they were trying to write it, and I think in such fashion that it wouldn't be considered a variance or an appeal, but a decision by the planning commission as an exception or some wording like that. Uh, and what my understanding is, what's going on right now is to clarify... Adjustment and to, to be a little bit more precise about what's included, case for an appeal and be more specific. There's already an enforcement section. Basically, it says that if you're guilty of violating the zoning code, it's gonna cost you a hundred bucks a day and every day's a separate violation. But that's only after it's gone through a long process and they already have a process for dealing with non-compliance. But the real question, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that when a decision is made by the Board of Zoning Adjustment, there needs to be a written decision and it needs to go to the person who made the appeal, the appellant, and advise that they've got 30 days or some set period of time to correct the problem or they will be cited. I mean, which is a little bit stronger language than just saying, we're gonna enforce the code.
That's correct, yes.
I'm in total agreement.
And I guess I will bring up that there's a couple of other issues that in my mind would, might not be a bad idea for us to consider in making some revisions to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. For one, right now, it says that the board will annually select a president, a vice president and a secretary from among its membership. Well, we don't do that. It would probably make more sense if we had wording in there that said, or the Department of Planning and Permits can appoint a staff person to be the secretary to the commission, something that, that recognizes the reality of the way we operate. Second item in there is that there's a, a requirement that there be sworn testimony as per state law. As Mr. City Attorney, there is no such state requirement, certainly not in the planning statute. So my question of us is, I don't, is there any city ordinance that requires it? I'm not aware of any. So at the very least, we need to take out as per state requirement because there is none.
Right.
And the other option is to take it out altogether. I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed to sworn testimony, but if it's not required, do we want to do it? And that's what we need to discuss.
Helps pull the truth out of a lot of people. A little bit better than...
But what would, how about just changing the language to drop that as required by state law because it isn't?
I agree.
And do you want to deal with the issue of electing a secretary?
Pull one from the staff works perfectly. Yes.
If you could draft some language to go in there that gives us the option in case, for whatever reason in the future, we don't want to do that. I mean, I can't imagine it. I don't think so. I can appoint officer. And right now, if we stuck with that, 60% of the commission would be an officer. That's top heavy.
Yeah.
But those are the only suggestions I'd add if we're going to make some revisions to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. To me, they're fairly minor, but it cleans it up. And I think, and we, as you said, we were gonna add a section that dealt specifically with the enforcement of a decision by the board.
That's correct. And it, and it stipulates that the secretary will notify the person in writing and establish a period of time for compliance.
At the end of that period of time, are we going to be able to, the alternative verify compliance?
We would be issuing a citation at that point and it would go through the board.
I agree. I see.
Yes, I believe that is actually in the, uh-
The current language simply says that if you want to appeal this, you have to take it to the court.
Yeah. All decisions at the Board. Yeah.
Anything other observations? In that case, if we can get some draft language sent to us prior to next month, I would, I think we'd be okay scheduling a public hearing, based on what we've heard this evening. Okay. Next item. Council Resolution on Public Works Rezone. I'll, I'll bring this up. We recall at the last, our last meeting, we recommended rezone of Public Works property to industrial. At the same time, we denied a request to change the land use plan to industrial. And the reason we went with industrial, because if time was of the essence, that was the only zoning classification that even halfway met the requirements of this kind of use. Council took exception to that and said, "No, that won't work." They've remanded it, and that's the language they used, they remanded it back to us to come up with a better solution. And, and their, their feeling was, "No, this should not be an industrial zone," period, end of paragraph. Yet also, the resolution point-blank said, "And we're going to do this. We are going to build the Public Works facility out there. Your job is to look at the code and determine what mechanism would be necessary to allow that to happen."
So do we just create a new code, call it like Public Works, or do we make a, like an R1 condition? I was thinking, but my thought was, we'd call it residential, uh, for municipal use. And municipal would only imply swimming pools and trucks.
There's already a conditional use in R1 for public, but it specifically says, "Oh yeah, but it can't include buildings." Uh, in my mind, there's about three options, maybe four available to us. One, but the other thing that the Council specifically said was, "We want to make sure that everybody understands that if, for whatever reason, the city decides not to do this, it's R1. It does not, it doesn't become another zone that we have to go back and fix." And their basic failing was, "We'll make this some sort of conditional use." And there's a couple of ways you could deal with that. One, I mean, anytime you have a conditional use, it's almost like an agreement. You're going to do it this way, or you can't do it.
Pull the condition of reverse.
Yeah. And if you don't do it, if the underlying zone does not change, or you could, but the other, so you could do it just for R1. We're going to make another additional use that says if it's for a, a public purpose, but you might want to put some criteria on it that says, "But you got to make sure you mitigate any adverse consequences to adjoining property," I mean, in order to make it a legitimate conditional use. The other possibility is because we don't know where something else like this might happen in the future, is to make it a system-wide conditional use, special public purpose conditional use. We don't care what the zone is, this, we will allow this, but we're going to have a public hearing, it's got to mitigate any adverse consequences on adjacent property, uh, and it goes to the City Council. I mean, those are the kind of options we've got. My, my sense is that we ask our planning consultant to look at the options available to us and advise the ups, the positive, the negative on these options, and make a recommendation to us as to the best fit.
Agreed. Well, I still like my, our residential, R1 residential for municipal use, because it covers everything from swimming pools to sewer plants, truck parking lots.
You do understand what one of the options will be.
Well, somebody does. Where do we stand in case one of these homeowners right next to it, Mr. Chairman says, "No, I'm going to fight this."
They have that right.
I'm sure they do.
That's why it has to be carefully crafted, yes.
Well, that part, our part has to, when they come up with a site plan, has to try to, to be a good neighbor, take some of the concerns of the existing citizens there into consideration.
It seems to me obvious that it doesn't matter what the zoning classification is.
Right.
I mean, those folks are upset, and they've got reasons to be upset. I mean, we, they don't know for sure what it's going to look like, what's going to happen, and there's a number of unknown factors out there. Bottom line has always been the site plan. And does it mitigate any adverse consequences? That's the bottom line. And, you know, if it's a public purpose that needs to be done, we just need to be careful about it.
On our brand-new library out there, I wonder what, what's the code on it? Do we- I think originally it was, uh, R3.
Did you get on the web and see the map?
Got the book online.
Can't believe you guys don't have that committed to memory.
That's one little parcel escaped.
R3. Corner where Matco is is C3, and then up from that is R3. All the way to, oh, everything, there's R. Here we go. Yep. Yeah, there's Ordinance 2106.
For discussion.
What's the timeline?
I said there's no particular rush, do it right. But don't wait till Christmas. Now, hopefully, we can come to some resolution to this within the next couple of months.
Am I incorrect in assuming the city owns that property?
Yes. Already updated on pages.
Any other comments on that? Next item's Vision 2040. The Vision Committee met last night. James Walden is still working with us on that, kind of for continuity's sake, and he did a statistical analysis, which provides a fairly good basis for understanding where we're at and where we're likely to be going. A couple of things that I think sort of surprised me, and I'll make, Andy will get copies of that to you by email tomorrow for you, if you didn't get a copy. But it looked at population distribution, it looked at housing, housing costs, housing affordability, um, and population growth. And it's projected pretty consistently that the population by 2020 of Sherwood is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-three to thirty-five thousand, and could get as high as fifty thousand by 2040. Which has a real bearing on, the city's going to change what it looks like, what's it going to look like. And the other thing that was kind of surprising, that there is a higher diversity and racial composition in Sherwood than in the state as a whole, or in Benton, or the rest of the metropolitan area. That surprised me. The distribution of age groups is, is not terribly different from the rest of the metro area. But a fairly high percentage in the, say, twenty-five to forty-five age range. So it's not as elderly as we might think, and not necessarily as young as we might think. The numbers were just kind of interesting. The housing affordability index was fairly decent, in James' opinion, and the income levels were clearly higher than the rest of the metro area, except for Malmell. So there, there were not a lot of surprises, but there were a couple.
We'll have to get a copy of that.
Yes. Also, I'm going to see if we can't get a copy. He's, James started working on a land use map, and basically has land use, suggested land use in the area south of Keel. The observation he made that I thought was real interesting, he said that he had never worked in a community before where there was less available space in an area of the city than there is south of Keel. And there's a couple of places where you cannot build on them because they're swamp or flood plain, but the rest of it is highly built up. So there's not much prospect for growth south of Keel. So that tells you where the growth is going to be, and he said that when he, he looked at trying to assign land use classifications, what he had done up to this point was largely reflective of what's there, with a couple of exceptions. I mean, he made it. It was pointed, when he said the mixture of different commercial classifications on Keel, I think he said was crazy, but it's just a hodgepodge quilt mess. And he was going to suggest streamlining that land use strategy in that area so that it made more sense, which will ultimately have some bearing on what the zoning code should look like. And one of the things I've been saying all along is that while we are concerned and have concerns about the nature of some of what we've got in our zoning code, we shouldn't be changing zoning districts and their parameters until we've got a plan that backs it up and tells us what it ought to be. And I have no problem changing administrative process sorts of stuff to get those cleaned up, like we've talked about this evening. We shouldn't be messing with zoning classifications until we know what we want it to look like. I'd like to get the map, even if it's only partially done, up on the website so people can start looking at it and hopefully commenting on it and give us some feedback, because we haven't gotten a lot.
And comments are going to be tough to get, because nobody knows that stuff so-
All you can do is try.
Yeah, I mean, we can put it up there, maybe on the homepage, they could say, "Check out this, we need your comment." Some flash, who knows? A lot of people subscribe, much like myself, to the automatic bulletins that come out of a different department. You know, like when agendas come out, or be special, whatever. You know, maybe set something up like that where they can send it out as an email like that, in the list. Another way of getting it. We're looking for comment, it's the only way we're going to get them. Ones I've seen are pretty much written by the citizens, except for the lease department.
Anyway, the progress is going slow, but I like the way it's going. I, I almost would rather it go deliberately than too fast. It, it's only about the future of our lives. That's all the old business I have, is there any new business? Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Usually save that for blank. Second.
Yes, ma'am.
Aye.
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 Well, I'll call the March 12th meeting of the Sherwood Board of Zoning Adjusted, Adjustment to Order. We'll call the roll.
Here.
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 You've received a copy of the minutes. Have you had any corrections or adjustments?
Motion through, sir.
I have a motion and a second.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Uh, aye.
There is no real business on the agenda, so it will stand as read. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Can I have a motion?
Yes, sir. Move.
Second.